Can you hear us Greg?
Yeah, I can hear you.
Can you hear us now?
Yep, sure can. Perfect. All right, guys, I'd like to call the, uh, the Regent Madison City Council of January 11th to, uh, to order and, uh, like to call, call to order please. And we got the invocation from Pastor Rob- Robin Scott from Asbury United Methodist Church.
Uh, let us pray together. Father, we thank you for, uh, the people who, uh, serve on this, uh, city council and for the call upon their lives. Uh, Lord, we know that often in society, we, um, separate the sacred from the secular. But Lord, we know that we serve you every day in every capacity of our lives. And I pray that tonight, uh, whatever decisions are going to be made, that you would grant wisdom and discernment, that you would grant compassion and love and justice and, and Lord, that all the decisions would be decisions that you would have us make. Uh, again, thank you, Lord, for each person that's here and, and for the role that they play, uh, in our city. And we thank you in the name of Jesus, our Lord. Amen.
Amen. Thank you so much Pastor. Like you, I'd like to do the pledge of allegiance, please. Thank you. We get the, uh, the row call, please Melanie.
Mayor Finley.
Here.
Councilmember Robleski.
Here.
Councilmember Spears.
Here.
Councilmember Powell.
Here.
President Shaw.
Here.
Member Bartlett.
Here.
Councilmember Denzine.
Yeah.
Councilmember Seifert.
There.
All right, we got a call. So we'll go into, uh, approval of minutes.
Move to.
From the 28th meeting. I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. Move to approve.
Second.
All right, we got a motion in a second. We have any discussion? We get that.
Yeah.
A couple of corrections that were asked for.
I made the corrections that, um, Councilmember Denzine and Councilmember Robleski asked for, somebody else asked for, somebody else on council asked for, and I, and I made those, or Connie maybe it was.
The one.
Did not make any changes as requested by Mr. Shingy. So I don't know how y'all want to handle that.
It is, it is corrected. Mr. Shingy's comment is, is corrected here. It says does not comply.
Oh.
Yep.
Okay. That's all discussion. Can, can I get the vote, please?
Councilmember Robleski.
Aye.
Councilmember Powell.
Aye.
President Shaw.
Aye.
Councilmember Spears.
Aye.
Councilmember Bartlett.
Aye.
Councilmember Denzine.
Aye.
Councilmember Seifert.
Aye.
Motion passes. So we, uh, have a couple of presentation and awards tonight, and we'll start with Ms. Debbie Oferkash of the Historical Society, uh, for the winners of Polar Express Trees.
So thank y'all for having me again tonight. Um, and thank the city for, for partnering once again with the Madison Station Historic Preservation Society. We really appreciate it and we like to be enabled to provide two events this year with you all very successfully. Uh, the first one I wanted to talk about real quickly, I know it was a football game. Um, the.
Really?
Second Annual Christmas Capers was virtual this year, as you all know. And, um, Samantha was lovely to work with, absolutely. I'm not on Facebook and she is the queen of it. So I really appreciate all that she did to make this happen. Um, it was held on December 14th. We had 20 merchants who participated. We were, had donations of over $3,000. And so we were really excited about that. And thanks to the mayor, council department heads, Walt Mary Anderson, and again Samantha for making that happen. It was very successful and we get some great feedback on that. Um, hopefully next year we'll be throwing chickens live again, but not live chickens. It was?
But not live chickens.
No, no, not live chickens. Um, the second event that we partnered with city on was the, um, Polar Express Christmas Tree Trail. And thank you Greg for helping with trees again.
Yes ma'am.
We started a little bit earlier this year and we got a great response from that. We gave them a week to decorate, which was much, much better. Sadly, the day that Tommy Everkash and I went to decorate was the day that it was 12 degrees. And we had to decorate three trees. So it was a little cold. The trees were up from November 30th to January 2nd. We had a total of 38 trees. And if y'all had the opportunity to go down there, they really were lovely. Um, we're expecting more in 2021 because we did have additional people who wanted to participate, but I was not a tree. So, um, again, thanks to the city. Um, I cannot say enough about Kelly Johnson and her team y'all. I don't know if you know the effort that this lady puts into every single day, but she answers my calls at 10 o'clock at night and is always responsive. And the trees were gone, the day the trees were supposed to be gone. And so Kelly and her team at Parks and Rec are just outstanding. We couldn't do it without them. Um, so tonight we do have the winners of the, um, Christmas trees and the, let's see, we'll start here. Winner of the Mayor's Choice Award is Madison Public Works. And I think Kent is masked in here. Uh, most creative tree, and I will tell y'all, I'm not a judge for this. Um, I have other people judge because I wouldn't be able to make my mind up. They're all so lovely. So the winner of the, whoops, wrong one again. Winner of most creative was the Riley Center and I think Melanie Crining. And our last award tonight is honorable mention and that's Ms. Tammy Hall of Main Street Cafe. Um, again, the trees were wonderful and, um, we got a great response, I think, because you could go down there and be socially distanced. The trees were far enough apart. It was a little bit of normal and an otherwise un-normal year. So again, we appreciate partnering with y'all and thank you for all you did. Thank you.
Thank you Debbie.
Thank you Debbie.
Thank you, Ms. Debbie. All right, next we have a presentation by the chamber. And I don't know if it's, uh, Merrill or Felicia with their annual appropriation. Are they here tonight?
Yes, I'm here.
Perfect.
Yes, again, my name is Merrill Wright, the interim director for the Madison Chamber of Commerce. I mean, I'm here tonight to respectfully request $50,000 from the city of Madison. Um, unfortunately in 2020, as we all know, we're unable to host many of our annual events that we do have, along with networking events that we're able to provide with our members and potential new businesses in the area. With that being said, we have planned accordingly for 2021. We have much more exciting news to come and more events that we can do socially distanced, you know, following CDC guidelines and so forth. Um, the chamber's overall objectives are to promote the city of Madison and the events that occur within the city, to support services and systems to benefit our members and consistently represent and advocate their best interest. We strive to enhance and grow business development programs for new and existing businesses in the Madison area, to promote that Madison's quality of life and standard of living throughout the community, and to partner with other organizations to promote the Tennessee Valley community. The Madison Chamber provides PR and promotes the events of the city of Madison, as well as nonprofit organizations working with the city of Madison for the benefit of the community. These events include, but are not limited to, and I won't read all of them, the city of Madison Parks and Rec, activities and events, the Madison City Schools and the PTA. We have Madison Visionary Partners, Madison Street Festival, our Trains on Main scavenger hunt, and the Christmas parade and tree decorating contest, contest, and much more. Our annual events that we do host, and we are hopefully set to host for 2021, we have the State of the City Address Connect 2021, Taste of Madison, the Chamber Color Run, which is a new event, Business Expo Kids Day, Best in Business Awards, tee up for Business Golf Tournament, and the Madison Market. So we are just hoping that we can allow for those events this year. The Madison Chamber provides relocation packets upon request. This provides our members with more advertising opportunities for their business as well. The responsibilities of the executive director and the board is as follows. We attend meetings of the Board of Directors, committee meetings, and chamber meetings and events. We represent the Madison Chamber throughout the Tennessee Valley. We participate in activities beneficial to the city of Madison and the Madison Chamber, which may include, we have a trip to Montgomery, Alabama, Washington DC, and any other events where the governor or national or state or local legislators are set to attend. We focus on building relationships with organizations and leaders, including, but of course not limited to NASA and Redstone Arsenal and other regional chambers of commerce. We establish and maintain an effective and efficient office that represents the professionalism and community pride of Madison. We proactively and effectively promote the Madison Chamber through various forms of media and local activities. And we also provide members with professional development, networking opportunities, marketing advice, and access to exclusive advertising opportunities. And to end, we have exciting news that the chamber is moving office locations and we will be directly across from City Hall off of Hughes Road. And we are very excited to work closely with the city and new council members as well. So that is all I have to say this evening for our presentation.
Very good. Thank, thank you so much for all that y'all do for Madison City. Does anybody have any questions?
I was just going to add also to say thank you very much during a very difficult year, the way you were able to still communicate with all of your members and provide, uh, uh, information and training. Uh, really appreciate everything the chamber has done for the city and, and its, uh, businesses.
Absolutely.
Can the public ask a question at this point, sir?
No, no ma'am. We'll, we'll come back in just a few minutes whenever we have public comments and allow that.
Thank you.
Yes ma'am.
Greg, I just want to mention that as the liaison for the chamber from the city council, I'm so excited about their new location, uh, where they're going to move. I think that that's going to help with the synergy with City Hall and the support that they give. And so I'm very excited that they're going to be able to make that move.
Absolutely. That's very, very good. Thank you so much. And, and next we have, uh, for our presentation is Ms. Liz Britton from, uh, Madison Visionary Partners.
Who's there? She's at the location.
I think they're. Madison Visionary Partners, or MVP, is a nonprofit that serves the Madison community. And our mission is to connect, uh, people who care with projects that matter in the city of Madison. We've brought together partners in the community from the city to Madison Visionary Partners and many other nonprofits that serve this community, along with small business and citizens, to build this River of Hope. And we have over 3,000 rocks that have been placed by everyone in our community with messages of hope that are so beautiful and inspiring during this uncertain time. And in addition to those rocks, we have also focused on raising money for our community. And so this River of Hope has raised over $10,000 to help families and the community that has been affected by COVID. Thank you to the entire Madison community for making this beautiful River of Hope something we can all come to visit over the following years. Thank you.
That's my board chair Beth Sible. Um, well, I would, um, like to say good evening. It seems a little surreal to be here. The last time I was here was a year ago and it seems like a lifetime ago. Um, I wanted to thank you, uh, not only for allowing me to speak on behalf of Madison Visionary Partners, but also to thank you for your past support of our organization. And, um, I will try to keep my comments brief, but it has been pointed out to me that, um, perhaps with new council members and new folks that I, I can speak at a little bit greater length about who MVP is and what our story is. So I will still try to keep it brief. Um, MVP, and let me know if you have a hard time hearing me with the mask. Um, MVP was formed by a handful of Madison citizens with the idea of providing the people that live and work in Madison, a place to make their donor dollars make a difference for them in their own community. Greater Huntsville has wonderful organizations. Um, they benefit many different causes. But there was a recognition that there did not exist a nonprofit whose specific purpose was to support the needs and programs in Madison. Um, which is why we've made our tagline, "We give where we live for a reason." Now, um, MVP went inactive for several years. Um, and the surviving members of the old MVP board recognized that fresh leadership consisting of a dedicated board of volunteers and an administrator dedicated to running the day-to-day business operations of a community nonprofit would be necessary for MVP to fulfill its mission of connecting people who care with causes that matter to benefit Madison. So in April of 2019, a new board of directors was recruited, elected, and I was hired as the executive director. Um, the bylaws were amended, the committees were formed, the processes were formed from the ground up. Everything from insurance to electricity, to computers, uh, media, both social and regular. So, um, we sort of kicked it all off with a listening tour, which was an informal focus group test, where we went out to the community and we asked them what they wanted and their own nonprofit. Now, once we got clear that we didn't do potholes or stoplights, it all went really well. Um, some of the answers from the community would not be surprising to you. It was Parks and Recreation, Arts and Culture, Vibrant Downtown, not surprising. But what surprised me was the universal number one position in the informal focus group. And that was the call for a hub and a leadership in our community nonprofits for Madison. A single place where people could go and then network outward. So MVP took these comments very seriously and it sort of, um, gave us the ability to prioritize our projects. So our first project was the renovation of the downtown gazebo in the historic district, which was again about this time last year. Um, we secured a grant from PPG to, um, give almost $8,000 in funding and materials. And we did, we renovated it, we decorated it again this past holiday. I had the joy of bringing the decorations down in about 20 degrees, but that was fun. Um, and from there into the winter, we were kicking off a campaign to help renovate our beloved Kids Kingdom, which as you all know, is going on 24 years now, and it's been much loved. Now, um, it was not an accident that we picked the Kids Kingdom. Kids Kingdom is the inspiration for MVP. It is a project that was created years ago with community fundraising, uh, in-kind donations, in-kind labor. It pulled the entire community together. And it is a shining example of the work that MVP would like to do and is doing. Um, one of the visions that we had was we appreciate all the work the city does to continually improve the quality of life in Madison. But we recognize that the city is only able to stretch their funding dollars so far. And we believe there is not only a need, but there's the ability to support philanthropy in our community. And philanthropy combined with collaborative work with local government, local business, individual schools, is the missing piece of the puzzle. Um, now, like everybody, I don't think we realized what was coming. So, um, when COVID, when the COVID pandemic, um, broke around the world and in our own community, Madison, like the rest of the nation, the world was and is still feeling its impact in innumerable ways. Um, MVP, like many other organizations, chose to pivot. We realized that it was an all hands on deck situation. We stopped our regular programming. We regrouped. We reached out to our brother and sister organizations in Madison and in Greater Huntsville. We formed a coalition and that coalition created a Facebook group in which we could communicate with each other and it created projects in which we could meet the COVID needs in our community. We disseminated PTE. We did the Madison River of Hope project. And we, um, we were able to pass along needs for other organizations. We connected the, um, Chamber of Commerce with a new wish on life. They were able to provide dog food and cat food for people who were unable to provide those services and so on. Um, in addition to the River of Hope, um, we continued to build our coalition of nonprofits and like-minded organizations to meet, obviously, the demand. Um, now, the River of Hope is complete. People can visit it in Dublin Park for years to come. Um, and it was the creation of the foundation for building a cohesive community response, not only to this pandemic crisis, but it will be essential for Madison in all the months and years coming to be able to do the work on the ground that we would like to do. And so last year at this time, you did, you helped us. You gave us the seed money, $40,000 to get to work. And in that time, we have been able to direct donor dollars back to the community. Last fiscal year, we were able to direct over $70,000 in individual donations to the city, as well as over 51,000 in grant funds to the city and the projects that we are working on. Um, we hope to do even better next year. Um, so as we continue to deal with the COVID needs in our community, we will continue to work on projects in the city that will enhance the quality of life. We have identified the priority projects as, um, helping fundraise the effort to put a pavilion, a performance pavilion in Home Place Park. Kids Kingdom always on our mind and in our hearts. So we will continue to push that forward. But interestingly enough, in the time that we were supposed to roll out last year to now, we have a new partner. And that is the Madison City Disability Advocacy Board. And we are very excited to work with them on not only helping to renovate Kids Kingdom, but to make it all-inclusive so that people with disabilities in our community have somewhere to bring their children to play. Um, we will continue to push forward and we are very excited about the Madison Community Center. I even spoke with someone today about my own thoughts where it could be so exciting for things that we can do there. We will continue to partner and sponsor in the community so that individuals and other organizations can network and share their knowledge and their manpower, um, to create other opportunities for giving in our community. Um, we have expanded to formally designate community volunteer projects. We recognize that individuals in the city are looking for places, not only to give their donor dollars, but to give their time. And, um, we will have several community volunteer projects over the year, like we did at the River of Hope, like we did at the gazebo. And folks can get down and get their hands dirty and do some of these projects that would really benefit our city. And lastly, COVID needs. The pandemic is unfortunately not over. We will continue to work in our community to support the needs in the community in any way we can. We will continue to partner with other organizations and, um, that work will continue as long as there is a need. So I would say to you, um, the common thread shared by community nonprofits and local government is a determination to use our respective resources to find solutions to meet today's challenges and to support our community. When we weave our resources together and then we start to take in other resources, other stakeholders, um, the fabric of that solution is stronger. Together we are stronger. Um, MVP appreciates the past support, which is a little bit why I made this long list. Because while my board and I are very proud of the work that we've done, sorry, it's hard to. Um, you all, city councils, city of Madison, were an integral part of all of these successes. Without your support, not just monetarily, the support of everyone working in your departments, Corey Parks and Recreation, Mary Bass, city planning, we wouldn't have been able to do any of this. So as you can send, consider MVP's funding request, please remember that by investing in your local nonprofits, you will enable organizations that have the structure and experience to support the needs of our community. We are so grateful, truly grateful for all of your past support and hopefully your continuing support. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you Liz. Is there anybody that has any questions for Liz? I don't know if she stepped away from the podium, but is there any, is there any council members that have any questions for Liz?
I, I was just going to say thank you so much for everything you do for our community. Very excited about working with you from McDabb to Kids Kingdom and, um, just all the work that you do behind the scenes and, and being out there in front and everything you do. Really appreciate it. Sorry, ma'am.
I would just like to add my comments because today, Beth, these wonderful women, Beth and Liz, spent over an hour talking to me today and explaining to me exactly what goes on. And I am thrilled with all of you doing. I love the concept that we have the needs in the city and we have people with huge hearts in the city and to bring them together, to work together for the good of the city. I mean, how better is that? I mean, you can look at government, but this is, this is great. This is community. And I really, I really appreciated your patience with me, all the questions that I asked. Y'all were very forthcoming and I really appreciated that, but just getting to know y'all too and understand the program. I think that was really good. So I do appreciate your time. I do.
Great, very good. Is there any other questions or comments, uh, from council? If not, we'll move into, uh, pu- public comments. And, um, is there anybody I'd like to address, mayor and council tonight?
Amelia Jackson, Ashley Estates.
Yes ma'am.
Do I need to tell you the category, sir?
No ma'am, you can just go ahead and, and talk about it.
Well, I know I'm on a time limit, so I'd like to express, um, two issues. One related to the Chamber of Commerce and then Madison Visionary Partners.
Yes ma'am.
So am I starting now?
Yeah ma'am, yeah, yes ma'am.
Okay, with the Chamber of Commerce, I inquired and I wanted to know why their, um, tax returns and, uh, donation documents are not available if they're a nonprofit?
We probably won't be able to answer all of your questions tonight. You're more than.
That's just the one question I have. So, um, we can move on to my comments related to MVP. If no one can answer that question, perhaps one of the council members can follow up for me in that, in that instance.
Yes ma'am.
Perhaps Councilmember Bartlett.
Yes ma'am, we'll follow up with that.
Okay. Good evening, Council President Shaw and council members, all districts. Over five months ago, I first emailed Mayor Paul Finley and council members to ask for disbanding of Madison City Government's de facto nonprofit arm. This de facto nonprofit arm is known as MVP. Just before the Madison City collect, election, MVP changed its website and reclassified Madison City employees onboard and changed their pictures. This action shows a history of Madison employees being agents of MVP. Mayor Paul Finley created MVP over eight and a half years ago while he was still Madison mayor. This is an ethics violation. Madison Visionary Partners Articles of Organization have Madison City Government employees on it. Can you imagine how successful your nonprofit would be if you had government officials who were also on your board due to their employment? Can you get any more elite status than that? Notable is that Madison Chamber of Commerce voted MVP as the best nonprofit for 2020. MVP has used 100 Hughes Road, which is Madison City Hall for years. Mark Jacobson, former city administrator, is documented as MVP's IRS, yes, Internal Revenue Service Point of Contact. Noteworthy is that MVP did not provide their financial documents and tax returns to the public after many inquiries. MVP is used by Madison City officials as a means to avoid difficult decisions and reward certain Madison citizens. On top of MVP avoiding contractual government processes, former government officials such as Taylor Edge and Mark Jacobson. Edge and Mark Jacobson were the original board of directors, another ethics violation. Mayor Paul Finley has called my questions about MVP and Madison City employees dark and demonic. I have asked all council members to vote no for the resolution of 2021 dash zero five R. Surely there are better uses of taxpayer funds, especially dur- during a pandemic. Why would council members reward a nonprofit that did not follow the rules of a contract or has a favored status? Please see the contract between MVP and Madison City Government. This contract has been broken as city employees were agents of MVP. That's been obvious tonight with the presentation. They have a favored status. MVP accepts donations for city departments that Mayor Paul Finley supervises and council members vote on donations and taxpayer funding. MVP disperses funds and is a middle conduit between businesses and Madison City Government. By virtue of ex officio positions, being a board member because of Madison City positions, there is still an affiliation. Mayor Paul Finley and Council President Shaw are on MVP's website. I do not care if you're an MVP voting member or not. This shows a basic advantage over all other nonprofits. MVP has had this advantage from the beginning. It has it now and will continue to have it in the future. Just with MVP's creation, this advantage is unethical. It does not take a rocket scientist to immediately see that MCG officials are automatically connected because of their positions. And MVP's Articles of Organizations has not been amended since 2013. It is not an adversarial relationship. It's a symbiotic one. If I were fundraising for MVP, it would make it very easy for me to fundraise with all the powerful and connected in Madison. How brilliant of Mayor Paul Finley to structure MVP this way. Mayor Paul Finley is the inspiration for MVP. This structure could one day make MVP to eventually be as important as any Madison City Department. What an exceptional legacy for Mayor Paul Finley. Is a Madison City building being considered for Mayor Paul Finley in the future? Just as its creation, all have been mentioned before, connections are unethical. Nonprofit does not mean that people do not make money. Why must the taxpayer be the missing piece of the puzzle? I am providing transparency with how MVP and Madison City Government operate in tandem. I can ask all council members to vote no for the forty thousand dollar funds to MVP. I specifically asked Council Member Teddy Powell, who is currently on the board, to vote no. I asked Council President Shaw, who is mentioned on MVP website, to vote no. I asked new term council members to vote no to MVP funding. I asked previous council members to remedy their previous votes. I'm almost done for providing no new taxpayer funds to MVP. This presents an opportunity for council members to be a representative democracy, not a one bo- bo- voice autocracy. If transparency is what each of you really believe in, my request should be considered to be one of the most important votes you decide on as a council member. It will show your constituents where your obligations lie and if ethics are considered essential to your voting record. Thank you again for the Zoom option.
Thank you. All right. Is there anyone else that would like to address council or mayor tonight?
Or to follow that one. I'm Donnie Spencer, 11369 Morris Drive. Thank you all for hearing me tonight, council. I promised y'all at the last council meeting that, uh, I would present you with a video tonight just to watch. Uh, I know we talked a lot about growth over the last several months. Um, and I'm showing you this video to highlight the fact that Madison has lived with growth for almost 40 years now and it's gotten us to where we are. So with respect to schools, this one is especially important because it is an ed, a video from 33 years ago addressing school situation in 1987. The credits to this video go to the late Alan Stroud, lifelong Madison resident that was taken from us too. So can play the video, please.
Stroud here with this week's 48 flashback. Today we're taking you back to the late eighties as kids from the Madison County School System were heading back to the books. Those here at Bob Jones High School had differing opinions of just what to expect as you'll see in this story from Wednesday, August 19th, 1987. The sound dreaded all summer. Thousands of students now back in Madison County schools. For some, that's good news. Marvin Allison is finally a senior.
You get a lot more freedom. You know, the teachers, they, they seem to have you real a lot more and, uh, no students look up to you and everything.
But for these high school freshmen, it's a new world. From the classroom to the lunchroom, everything is different.
Most nights, as I thought it'd be.
Enrollment this year is up to about 12,000 students in the 18 schools. Just one more factor for Sheila Byrd in her first day teaching here.
We are overloaded, but everything is working out real well.
The verdict, so far, so good. And for administrators, that's encouraging because first school days bring a built-in mountain of potential trouble.
All the students have worked with us. We have some scheduling problems, but we're working those out.
Those troubles stem from new students.
And you never know how many new students will show up that do not have schedules. And that's been our major problem today.
To take care of the growth, there is new construction everywhere.
We've got more space, but it's all full.
Still to come, about three dozen new classrooms each year.
If we can average that many classrooms for the next several years, we can keep up with the growth. Most of the schools where we have built, uh, classrooms are still at capacity.
But with no major problems today, it's now hoped the rest of the year only goes as well. Todd Terry, WAFF 48, the news at 5:30.
Offered you that video just to let y'all show what the true history of Madison's growth is. Uh, that video also predated the formation of the Madison City Schools by 11 years. Uh, and it's also important to note that in 1987, all 18 schools in Madison County had portable classrooms. But the growth provided for the growth of those school systems. Thank you.
Thank you, Donnie. I hope everybody saw me on the front row in one of those videos. I just want y'all to know that was me being studious way, way, way back in 1987. Perfect. Thank you, Donnie. I know. Correct. I think that's when Bob Jones still, still had a smoking court out back.
Got somebody else coming up to the podium, Greg?
All right.
Heather Morgan, 173 Rainbow Drive. Good evening, Happy New Year and Roll Tide. I can't wait to go home and listen to my husband yell at the TV. Um, I'm here again representing I Vote Madison and about transparency and public participation, but this time, um, in regard to hiring a new police chief. Um, a lot of people in the community have questions now with that coming up and they want to know some of the things that y'all are going to be doing, such as will a new chief be promoted from within the department? Does the city have a timetable for assigning a new chief? What is the city looking for in its new chief? Does the city, um, what is the process? Will residents be able to provide input? Will residents be offered information about how many candidates were interviewed and whether they were interviewed inside the city or state or from outside? I Vote Madison requests that council and the mayor, one, be open about the hiring process, communicate with residents during the process and actively provide ways for the public, um, to participate. Public participation can include surveying residents and hosting public forums such as town halls and listening sessions, um, and also doing surveys. We hope that, uh, several avenues will be made available and not just, you know, an internet survey, for example. One suggestion for the city, how the city can use this input is to create a candidate profile, like you would see on a job application that says what the city of Madison wants, um, in its police chief. Every city has its own challenges. Every city has its own past and, um, the building trust is something that the new police chief will have to face, the challenge he'll have to face when he comes in or her. Um, building trust, especially the trust of our black residents and residents of color is a challenge and residents have not forgotten about Shersby, Patel and Dana Fletcher. We have not forgotten the ways that Madison City and Madison County responded or maybe didn't respond following these events, tragic events. One of I Vote Madison's core values is fostering diversity, equity and inclusion. We hope that the city holds these same values when searching for a new police chief. One thing our organization wants in a new police chief is a willing, willingness to direct these, um, issues head on. We want to thank Chief John again, um, for fully staffing the crisis intervention and also for creating, um, the professional training division. I Vote Madison wants the new Madison Police Chief to continue to provide training and education when it comes to diversity, bias, de-escalation and racial justice. Thank you. Thank you for your service.
Thank you. Is there anyone else I'd like to address council and mayor tonight?
And Greg, I was just going to say, I think Ms. Beebe's coming up, but, um, when I give my comments in a minute, I will address kind of how we have, um, done the police chief interviews, uh, previously and what folks can expect. So I'll add that here in a minute.
Pretty good. Yes, Ms. Beebe?
Cause I want to get back to the game too. Uh, about this visionary partners. I remember last year when they were here, I got up and asked the same thing and something happened. I was going to go by and see them and try to find some answers to it, but we had a little pandemic that came around and kept me inside and I still don't particularly want to go by there. But I would like to know exactly how they operate and how they get the money and how much money is spent on things. My, one of my big problems with the city is the spending of my money, as you know, if you've been here any length of time. And, uh, I might want to spend some on some things. I don't, how do you, I don't know how you find out what projects they're doing, why they spend their money, how they, they get these nonprofit people out here. Do they go to businesses? I don't know how they do it. I'd just like to know a little bit more about how it's done.
And I, when I bring it up to council, I was going to add a little bit about that and I-
Come see you sometime.
But I'll, I'll add something here too, so you can hear it here too.
Thank you, Ms. Beebe. Is there anyone else I'd like to address council and mayor?
No one here, Greg.
Excuse me?
Nobody else.
All right. With that, we'll close public comments and we'll move into consent agenda and finance committee report.
Uh, finance committees looked over the, different members have looked over the, uh, consent agenda and we're, we're comfortable with everything. Um, also I'd like to mention a couple of donations. Um, we had two donations from, uh, Mary Walker. Both were five hundred dollars, one to police and one to fire. Um, we had an additional five hundred dollars from Beverly Ford Big Forty, um, and also thirty-five dollars. Uh, that, that went to, uh, that was fire and then also thirty-five dollars fire from Kathleen Harris. So with that, I'd like to ask for approval.
Can we get a second?
John.
All right. We got a motion in a second. Can we get, uh, any, any, any discussion? Can we get the vote, please?
Councilmember Powell.
Aye.
Councilmember Seifert.
Aye.
Council President Shaw.
Aye.
Councilmember Robleski.
Aye.
Councilmember Spears.
Aye.
Councilmember Bartlett.
Aye.
Councilmember Denzine.
Aye.
And motion passes. All right. We'll move into, uh, presentation of reports and we'll start with the mayor.
All right. Let me go ahead and start by asking council for approval of resolution number 2021 dash oh four dash R approving the annual appropriation for our Chamber of Commerce or their appropriation of fifty thousand dollars to be paid by the general fund.
Need to approve.
Okay.
All right. Got a motion in a second. Any, uh, discussion?
Well, and just to make sure, what's going to happen from now until probably sometime through March is two organizations, um, per meeting will be coming. What they do to obtain this, uh, funding is when the budget process is going on sometime around June, July, uh, they have to put in, uh, a packet that in turn says, we're requesting this amount of money and for that amount of money, this is what we're willing to do. They give it to finance. They give it to the mayor's office. We in turn analyze that based on what we hear, see and, and meet with in the community's needs and then present that into our budget when we present that to council and non, uh, non-departmental appropriations. One of the things council did is set a limit on that. I think it's at, is it three or four percent, guys? Three percent, I think, of our general fund. What's that?
Three percent.
So three percent. And so that's all the money that we would be available based on the general fund. So these are the first two of appropriations. Our Chamber of Commerce, again, during the pandemic, uh, found themselves to be very creative. They continued to work diligently to keep our community, uh, engaged. Um, I can tell you before the pandemic hit, you know, they were doing, uh, a ribbon cutting and a groundbreaking almost every week and sometimes every day. Um, so they've done a great job of trying to continue to support the city. Uh, Maryland did a, a, a good job of defining kind of what their scope of work is. We certainly hope we get through this pandemic and they are able to continue to do that. And so again, I ask you guys for your approval.
Any other discussion? All right. With that, can we get the vote, please?
Councilmember Powell.
Aye.
Councilmember Seifert.
Aye.
Council President Shaw.
Aye.
Councilmember Robleski.
Aye.
Councilmember Spears.
Aye.
Councilmember Bartlett.
Aye.
Councilmember Denzine.
Aye.
And with that, the, uh, motion passes.
All right. And secondly, I'd like to ask for council approval on resolution number 2021 dash oh five dash R approving the annual appropriation agreement with Madison Visionary Partners for their appropriation, forty thousand dollars to be paid from the general fund.
Need to approve.
Okay.
All right. Got a motion in a second. Any, uh, discussion?
All right. And, and I'll add, I thought Liz did a good job of defining a lot of what Madison Visionary Partners is. It is no secret that it was definitely an idea that we had and I presented in, um, 2012 to a group of citizens in historic downtown Madison. And again, having had the, 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 um, uh, I say belief, but being a part of Jane Dow's Kids Kingdom where Jane had struggled for a year and a half to two years to get her 501(c)(3) put in place to then be able to support a community to come together and build Kids Kingdom. And I think it was 2000, nineteen ninety-seven, nineteen ninety-six, ninety-eight, sometime in that timeframe. It was such a great building block for our community. And so when we were able to look to do that same thing in 2002 with our concession facility up at Palmer Park, we were able to use Madison Baseball Association's 501(c)(3), roll it under there because it was field and, and work with the city hand in hand to get that done. This started in 2002 with us coming to council meetings and asking, how could we possibly work with you guys to take an old concession facility and make it look like a new one? And we worked for two years and in the end, an eighty thousand, city paid eighty thousand dollars. Um, they, they got about a $270,000 concession facility that we're still using to this day. So that's the genesis of MVP of, of finding a conduit. So people in our community who want to do something good can do something good for our community. And, and I welcome the chance to say we're a part of it. I love the fact we started it and we continue to work towards putting that in place. So when it comes to a lot of what Liz talked about and the three different ways right now that we're looking for support, you know, the, the two big one, one, if you have a project that you'd like to see done, but you right now don't know how to do it, I, that's part of where the 30 minutes or, or two hours every two weeks and 30 minute sessions. I have so many folks come and want to do something positive. They don't know how. So sometimes it's just guiding them towards MVP to use that. Sometimes it's an Eagle Scout. We have, you know, just the ability to say, hey, you want $200 in materials, we'll give you that. Do in turn, do a great thing for our community, for your community service project. So it's a conduit, one for your project. Secondly, if you just want to make donations. Last year we had someone who, who anonymously wanted to show the police their support and did through MVP. And they gave that money to them. Then the money's given to the, to the police foundation. They have to follow bid laws to, to spend that money. But most importantly, and where I think MVP is going to be successful and what Ms. Beebe was talking about is we have naming right opportunities right now. People who said, you know, I wouldn't, I'd prefer my, whatever, 200,000, 300,000, half a million, not go to the government. I'd prefer to give it to a, a, a 501(c)(3) and put it in the name of my, you know, father, my kids, myself, whatever they want to do. You know, that's one of the things with the, 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 um, the old three springs. It will not be named three spring. We, we want a naming rights opportunity. So that money, if it comes into the city, can put back into that project to make it bigger, better and stronger. So, um, we're looking for that. We're looking for the Home Place Park Pavilion, which could be an organization who for 250,000 dollars can help us fund that and in turn have it named for them. So it's a great opportunity, one that we don't shy away from. Liz and them, and there's no secret that we've all worked to try to get it set up. It's set up autonomously now with an incredibly strong board. So I, and something like, I really appreciate Karen going and educating and learning because I agree with her. It is a wonderful thing for our community that will be used hopefully for years and years to come. And I think, and I'll say this, and there's no secret about it because Liz knows it and Beth's here. Success this year is finding those big donors. It's finally connecting with those folks. COVID came at the very time we were going to take the nucleus of what this is and bring it back out to our community to have an opportunity to support it. And COVID slowed that down. They know, guys, right now, when it comes to funding next year, that's one of the things we're looking at is to find that connection with someone who wants to support our community in something big with something that in turn happens and it'll be done with that organization. So I'll answer any questions. I know Liz will too, but again, uh, And it'll be done with that organization. So I'll answer any questions. I know Liz will too. But again, uh, I, I, I welcome the chance um, to continue to watch this organization support our city and, and appreciate council's consideration in funding this.
Very good. Any other discussion with council?
I would just like to add to that. And BB, you, you questioned the money. I questioned the money too. Because I swore when I took this position that I would look at the money that comes in and the money that goes out and is it well spent? And after talking to these ladies, 40,000 that we gave them, it came back. Right? So it was a benefit to the city money-wise. Besides all the other goodwill and all that that also comes with it, it did pay for itself. Because I was concerned and they let me see the bylaws, how they're organized. They gave me a list of everybody that's on the board. I knew some of them. All good people. Um, so I, I honestly feel, BB, that it is all, and that's all I can give you is my, my education. I didn't understand.
Well, I, but BB, I fully, I fully agree with you. And I think that's, they, they, that's absolutely the next step. Yep. We'll do it.
Very good. Thank, thank y'all so much. With that, uh, is that all the discussion? Can, can I get the vote, please?
Councilmember Powell?
Aye.
Councilmember Seifert?
Aye.
Council President Shaw?
Aye.
Robleski?
Aye.
Councilmember Spears?
Aye.
Councilmember Bartlett?
Aye.
Councilmember Denzine?
And motion passes.
All right. A couple of other things, uh, real quickly. One of the things that I think, uh, Councilman Shaw is looking to set up is a work session on January 20th, uh, that's a week from Wednesday. Uh, the two primary things that we're going to talk about there, uh, economic development, I know Mary Beth and, and her team, um, are going to talk a little bit more about that, kind of the breadth of what we do. As importantly, um, when we did the, uh, 2012 growth plan, she, uh, we, we set six key development areas and, and, you know, kind of show how we've brought a lot of those along and what it's done and where we are. I think it kind of sets it up as, as council has started to talk about, hey, we're, we're looking to, to, to have a more comprehensive plan. Um, so let's start from a community standpoint with kind of understanding how we got to this point as we're working with, uh, some on council to, to start to look at the comprehensive plan on, and piece of that. Secondly, we're going to talk about communication. You know, one of the things about it, and when it comes to our website, uh, you know, we are always willing to continue to make our website better. I know when I came in in 2008, the first thing we asked for is money for our website. We came in in 2016, the second thing we asked for was money for our website. The first thing was a communication specialist who could update it. So we firmly believe in continuing to do that, but I think we need to start with what's on what we have now. And so Samantha's going to do a full presentation to the community at the work session on how our website works, how council could use it for certain things such as blogs, um, newsletters and so forth. Um, and we'll, we'll get that, uh, to council on that, on that work session on the 20th. On January 28th, our next city council meeting, Ralph Nelson, Chief Honcho from the Trash Pandas is coming and he's going to give the year in review and work and, and let council know exactly. There's no secret that one of the agreements we had with Ball Corp was the million dollar payment. Ralph's going to come, give us a full synopsis of 2020. Um, the good, the bad, and the good news is I don't think there's a whole lot of ugly, other than we just didn't get to play. But there's a lot of pieces that we want our community and our council to understand, and Ralph will be coming for that. Two other quick things, I, I don't, I'm, I'm going to end on, on, um, something else, but going back to police chief, Chief Ternigan, um, again, thank you so much for everything you've done for the community, for your service to our community. Four, 41 years in law enforcement. Um, what I really appreciate about chief, um, is his integrity. And I'll just tell you that right now. You may, we may not agree with every decision that any of us have ever made, but I always appreciated his integrity. Um, uh, with that said, we will appoint an acting chief and it will be from within right now. Um, and that'll happen in the next couple of days. Then when we go to the process, the way it's worked previously, right now, HR has taken the job description for our police chief and they are continuing to finesse it to see if there's anything else that we want and need to add to it. Um, we're starting with, as we always do, the mayor and HR committee will have it and we'll bring it to council. It will be approved via council. So if, if you guys are looking to give feedback to your council on what you'd like to see it be, you can email them, you can call them, you can let them know. Once we have the job description, it will be a nationwide search. It was before, it will be again. When we get those nationwide searches, we then narrow that down. I can remember walking into a, 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 the conference room 130 and having yes, no, and yes, but you need to know this. We do a very extensive background check. And in turn, we then bring forth somewhere between 10 to 12 candidates that's been interviewed by an internal committee that is from the police department, the mayor's office, city council. Um, I'm open to what else council would decide that we wanted. Um, but it needs to be small. And the reason for that is you will not get a lot of people on a nationwide search put in for the police chief if it is done too much in the public. So what we do is we take that, we narrow it down to three, two, fives, at which point they are told the next interviews will be done via the public, with the public in those interviews. And that's how we did it last year, or last time, that's how we'll do it again this time in bringing it to council with three to five, that you guys then have the opportunity to hire one of those. Two, if you want to budget for it, but one, probably that way. And that's how our, our police chief interviews would, would work right now. So from a, from a public feedback standpoint, you know, we definitely put the job description out. Uh, I think council welcomes anything that you guys would have in letting them know what you're looking for. Community policing, um, and, and the ability to manage an ever-growing city with a, with a budget that, um, continues to be strong, but, but not just, you can spend it on anything that you want to is primarily what we're looking for. And then as I end, um, you know, I'm always appreciative when we're able to hand out pins. And those are the, the, the longevity pins for our department heads. And in this case, it may not seem like a long time, but five years for Mary Beth Rowan probably feels like dog years 35. And so I want to, I'm not even going to make you come up because I know you won't touch it anyway. So I'll mitigate it. You can come get it when you want it. Um, but you know, Mary Beth, you know, one of our employees of the year, two years ago, I think, um, someone who just strongly, strongly, the core of Mary Beth is, is to continue to bring businesses and, and, and business retail here that makes a difference for our community. Thank you. Appreciate your five years. With that said, Greg, that's all I have.
All right. Thank, thank you, mayor. And we'll go to district number one.
No new business.
District number two.
Um, I too wanted to thank Chief Ternigan for his, um, service to our city. And, um, I hope that you thoroughly enjoy your well-earned retirement. And, um, I know Mary Beth has a list a mile long of things that she has planned for you to do. But I hope you also get to spend a little time doing some stuff you'd like to do too. Um, I would, the other thing I'd like to say is that, that the process for hiring a police chief is very similar to the process of hiring a school superintendent. And, um, there's a reason for that, and that's because across cities and school systems across the state and generally across the nation, it's a very similar process if you start paying attention. They have, um, a nationwide, they have a, a job description, a nationwide search. There's a committee that narrows down. Then there's, um, the public interviews. Input is taken at each one of those, um, steps. Anytime you wanted to contact our city council person, it doesn't have to be the one in your district. But you know, it might be helpful if it was the one in your district. But we are all always open to, um, suggestions and we can add comment at any point in the process. So this will be a very open process when we get to that point. When, um, the mayor said a lot of people will not want to apply if it's very public in the beginning phases of the interviews. And that is because sometimes somebody doesn't want their, their current employer to know that they are implying until they are seriously a contender. Because they don't want to make it so that their employer might think that they're headed out the door. And so we found that, um, with the school superintendent searches. And, um, it's also, it's really a common process. So I just wanted to reiterate what the, um, what the mayor had said. And I'm, I'm not going to say those words, but I'll say, go Bama.
Take what we can get.
Thank, thank you very much. Uh, district number three.
Uh, just like Connie was coming to reiterate, reiterate about the mayor's, uh, comments, what she was trying to say was roll tide. Secondly, uh, chief, thank you for your service, not only here, but, but for our nation. Um, thank you for everything you've done and, and I echo the words of your integrity. It's, it's the perks. So thank you for that. Um, also, I'd like to mention, uh, Public Works, that, you know, they did a great job and, um, finished up the, uh, the trailhead. So I just want to thank them for that and all the hard work they've done. And that's all I have.
All right. District number five.
Roll tide. That's it.
At a girl.
District number six.
I would just like to add my heartfelt sadness that we are losing you, chief. I think you have been excellent in our community. You have led our community very well. And I always feel safe when I'm out in the streets, whether it's middle of the day or it's 10 o'clock at night. I always know that we are taken care of in this city. And I appreciate all that you've done. I appreciate all of your service throughout the years also. Um, I am sad that I'm not going to be able to miss you, I work with you as a, as a liaison. But, um, just know that you are missed and that you have been loved by you. And roll tide.
District number seven.
Well, I guess I'm going to start off a little bit of a bird outside War Eagle.
Really playing tonight?
So that, that's probably a basketball game. Um, from the standpoint of, of chief, um, thank you for your years of service. It's, it's a hard job. Um, you don't know when you get out of the car, if you're going home that evening, uh, to your family. And I appreciate what you do. And then opening it up larger, uh, you know, National Law Enforcement Appreciation Day was on nine January a couple of days ago. So thank you to the entire department, chief, what you lead. And, uh, you, you've got a great department that you've led. Some big dag on shoes to fill. And I appreciate everything you've done as well as your men and women, uh, in uniform that protect and serve on a daily basis. So thank you. And then the other part is, uh, in the mayor's, um, weekly or, or bi-weekly email that comes out, uh, didn't want to, uh, highlight Dizzy Dean that, um, uh, back in Oc, uh, yeah, October, uh, we were able to, uh, give them a, a, uh, uh, amount of money, uh, not to exceed 40,000, uh, for going and bidding on the state tournament. They were successful in getting all age groups between five and 12, uh, for the state tournament that'll be conducted between 18 and 30 June of this summer. And, uh, I know in the past, we've got almost a two to one return on that, uh, investment. In some cases, a three to one. And I know they're working as well with Parks and Rec, with our chamber to see how we can, uh, maximize those tax dollars and return on that investment, keeping folks here in the city, in the hotels, uh, as well as, uh, coupons and things with the local businesses. Uh, because Chris McFarland with Dizzy Day, he will actually, or with Madison Baseball, he'll actually go to the coaches' meetings and he'll be able to, and work with the chamber and our city to give each of these coaches for these things packets that'll say, go to this hotel, you get this rate. You go to this business, you're able to spend your money here, uh, and, and things, local promotion. Anybody that's ever coached a baseball or basketball team, you want to keep your kids as close as possible, um, uh, together. And so, uh, I've seen them be able to do that hopefully, uh, maximize the return on that. So, all right, that's all I got.
Very good. Got a few things. Um, one, like Paul said, we do plan on having a work session on January 20th at 5:30. And, um, in addition to the two items he has, if we have time and if Megan can get everything worked out, we're looking at having, uh, talking about the, uh, citizens advisory board that'll be with the, uh, that'll work with the police also. So, um, I know Megan's going to work toward getting that done. Um, want to talk about these Zoom meetings. Uh, we're going to continue, uh, these Zoom meetings, um, as long as this spike of, of, of is up during this pandemic. Um, so I don't know if that's going to, if these Zoom meetings will continue for the next two or three meetings or two months or just however long it is, but, uh, we'll work with, uh, uh, everybody and we'll watch and when everybody feels safe again and, um, we think is, is, is good, we'll, we'll go back to live, to live only. So, uh, we will continue these. Uh, we'll let you know week to week when, you know, how these are going to be, um, put, put out. And ways to communicate. I know there's been some people that's either emailed, uh, me or some other council members on how do they communicate. So you can either get, get on Zoom if you want to talk on public comments or either on public hearings and you can talk just like Ms. Jackson did earlier tonight. Um, or if you want to come in person, but that'll be the two avenues that, uh, is the best way to address council. Um, or either the mayor di- during the Zoom meetings. Um, other than that, that's, that's all I have.
Greg, you have two items on, um, reap.
Yeah, I've got that. I was going to say as far as, I've got, I've got two, I've got two resolutions. Uh, the first one is to, uh, appoint, uh, reappoint, uh, Megan as our city attorney. And, um, with that, can I get a motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
All right, got a motion and a second. Um, is there any, uh, discussion? All right. With that, can I get the vote, please?
Aye.
Spears?
Aye.
Council President Shaw?
Aye.
Aye.
Councilmember Bartlett?
Aye.
Councilmember Denzine?
Aye.
Councilmember Seifert?
Aye.
And motion passes. With that, I also like, uh, have another, uh, resolution to appoint, um, Chief Bailey's our fire chief from, from the four years. If I could, can I get a motion?
Move to approve.
All right, got a motion and a second. Is there any discussion?
Is that contract still having there that, that mustache gets 30% of the salary? David, it's gone, man. I hate.
I get to drive the fire truck now that Steve's gone.
I'm not going to add that. I've seen you drive. With that, uh, can we get the vote, please?
Councilmember Robleski?
Aye.
Councilmember Seifert?
Aye.
Council President Shaw?
Aye.
Councilmember Spears?
Aye.
Councilmember Powell?
Aye.
Councilmember Bartlett?
Aye.
Councilmember Denzine?
All right. And motion passes. So we have no board or committee performance tonight. We have one public hearing.
All right. Thank you, sir. Uh, the revenue department, we have one public hearing this evening. We've got a request from the Cracker Barrel Old Country Store Incorporated doing business at Cracker Barrel number 217 at 120 Cleghorn Boulevard. They requested a restaurant retail liquor license. Uh, this is a new, uh, request for alcohol beverages at this location. Uh, the police department has signed off on this and subsequently getting the paperwork to you. Building and Fire has signed off as well. So everything is in order. Also, we do have a representative with the Cracker Barrel here if there's any questions.
All right. Anybody like to open the, I'd like to open the public hearing?
You got, you got a question?
You're going to have to come on.
I might.
You might, you might have a really good question that they all.
They won't be able to hear you.
Is this something new for all Cracker Barrel? Is this something new for all Cracker Barrel?
When you're.
So that's beer, wine, mimosas that started in Florida and now is coming this way. For anybody who couldn't hear out there.
All right. Does anyone else would like to, uh, address councilor, mayor over the public hearing? If not, we'll close public hearing. All right. Motion, a couple of seconds. Is there any, uh, discussion?
I'll just say Mama's Pancake Breakfast got a lot better with mimosas. So thank you very much. If you can bring back the pecan strudel pie, that would be great. Yeah.
All right. Can, can we get the vote, please?
Councilmember Seifert?
Aye.
Councilmember Robleski?
Aye.
Council President Shaw?
Aye.
Aye.
Councilmember Powell? Aye.
Councilmember Bartlett?
Aye.
Councilmember Denzine?
And motion passes. Thank, thank y'all so much. So we'll move into department reports. Motion passes. Thank, thank y'all so much. So we'll move into department reports. First we got is court.
Good evening. Asking for your approval for resolution number twenty twenty-one dash twelve dash R. This will authorize an agreement with the Madison County Sheriff and the Madison County Commission for the housing of city inmates.
Move to approve.
Second. All right, motion and a second. Any, uh, discussion? Can we get the vote, please?
Councilmember Seifer.
Aye.
Councilmember Powell.
Aye.
Councilmember President Shaw.
Aye.
Councilmember Robleski.
Aye.
Councilmember Spears.
Aye.
Councilmember Bartlett.
Aye.
Councilmember Dan Zing.
Aye.
And motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, next, we'll move into engineering.
I've got three items for you tonight. First one is, uh, a report that's required, uh, for our, um, Rebuild Alabama Act-funded projects. In two thousand nineteen, the state passed an additional sales ta- uh, gas tax. Uh, with that additional tax, uh, they are funding ATRIP two projects, which are yearly, uh, projects that they put out uh, for, uh, proposals from various, uh, counties and, and municipalities. They also have, um, a Rebuild Alabama Fund, which we, uh, currently have submitted a request to fund the traffic signal out of that pool. But each year, they, they distribute a certain part of that tax to each county and city. Uh, in two thousand nineteen, we were, uh, it was estimated that we would get a hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars. And, um, we did not, uh, spend anything in two thousand nineteen, uh, but in two thousand twenty, we asked that you, uh, approve the, the funds that were accumulated to be used for Hardeman Road paving. And, uh, we did pave the road this past year, uh, when the, uh, bill came due, uh, a hundred and eighty-five thousand budgeted was, was expensed for that road project. Uh, this act does require the, uh, county or city engineer to, uh, report to, uh, the governing body, first meeting in January, to, to tell you what the money was used for. Uh, they do require these funds to be, uh, competitively bid under the state, uh, bid law. And work has to be done according to the state, um, specifications, construction specifications. Uh, one easy way of complying with this, which is the route I would recommend we always take, is to use this fund for resurfacing and use a county, uh, contract. They specifically state that if you use a county contract for the resurfacing, uh, then you've, you've met the, uh, bid and specification requirements. And I believe that covers everything I'm supposed to duly report. Any questions on that?
Was there a specific?
Abby else's job.
Specific traffic light that it was going to fund, you mentioned early on?
It's not going to fund. We have applied for funding to see if we would be granted it. Uh, but we specifically submitted the Madison Boulevard, uh, jet flex.
Okay, the production, thank you, yes.
Do you know how that, um, broken out to the county?
I do not know the details of how they distributed the money. Uh, something like eight percent of the overall taxes was distributed to the municipalities. Um, and there was formulas by, uh, population and by size of city. Uh, there was two different ways they distributed it.
I just curious, I know it's.
We were happy to get something extra because we, we definitely need resurfacing funds. Uh, I'm also requesting approval for resolution number two thousand twenty-one dash eleven dash R to authorize the acceptance of a conservation easement from AAA Holdings for medical facility site on County Line Road. Uh, that site is under construction now. Uh, they are building it on an area that is mostly wetlands. And in order to build their site, they had to, uh, get a corps of engineers permit to fill some of the wetlands. Uh, they utilized every bit of their allotted space for construction. They did not leave any space for detention and stormwater, uh, quality projects. And so they utilized the remaining property to comply with that, um, uh, regulatory requirement. And because of that, we asked them to place, uh, the bulk of the remaining property in a conservation easement. So it will be preserved, uh, in perpetuity, uh, and left in its natural state.
Move to approve.
All right, got a motion. And a second?
Me, Ted, John.
Any discussion? Get the vote, please.
Councilmember Powell.
Aye.
Councilmember Seifer.
Aye.
Councilmember President Shaw.
Aye.
Councilmember Robleski.
Aye.
Aye.
Councilmember Bartlett.
Aye.
Councilmember Dan Zing.
Motion passes.
And the, the third one is a proposed ordinance, two thousand twenty-one dash ten. It's a, uh, first reading or modification to our flood ordinance. Uh, the original flood ordinance, uh, required any new developed lots to be one hundred percent filled above the flood plain. We found that is impractical in certain cases. And, uh, we're wanting to, uh, redefine that to where we can, uh, fill the buildable space and the rest would be covered in a, a drainage easement to protect the future homeowners.
Very good. Thank, thank you, Gary. Next, we got fire.
Evening. Just, uh, one resolution we're asking for approval for, resolution twenty twenty-one thirteen R. It just authorizes us to, uh, use a consulting service, Rickers Consulting Service, pay nine hundred dollars out of our, uh, department budget. We, uh, have got a twenty-year-old air compressor that, that we utilize to refill all of our air bottles for firefighting heavy rescue operations, and, um, it's been giving us a lot of trouble the last two years. So we, we, uh, we need to do and get another one. Those are about eighty thousand dollars. So this is a ten percent grant. If we're able to get it, so we would, uh, again, utilize that money out of our budget approval to get the, get the, uh, grant.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any, any discussion? Can I get the vote, please?
Councilmember Powell.
Aye.
Councilmember Robleski.
Aye.
Councilmember President Shaw.
Aye.
Councilmember Spears.
Aye.
Councilmember Bartlett.
Aye.
Councilmember Dan Zing. Councilmember Seifer.
Aye.
Motion passes. That, thank you, chief. Net, next, next we got police.
Yeah, chief. Good evening, council. I'm bringing to you resolution number twenty twenty-one dash fifteen dash R to authorize property use agreement for Police Department Emergency Vehicle Operations Force. No expenditure of city funds. I'd like to give you a little bit of background on this. Um, my community resource officer, uh, Teresa Taylor Duncan, who's over my shoulder here in the back in uniform, brought a proposal uh, to me about a way that we can, uh, reduce, uh, some of the accidents that we've been having. The mayor reminds me of this, uh, on a regular basis. Uh, we do operate vehicles twenty-four seven in all types of weather, including, uh, some of the winter weather that we have out here. Sometimes we drive fast and sometimes we go off the road. So, uh, having said that, uh, we approached Dunlop. It has a, uh, uh, test proving ground.